Well, folks, welcome to another video segment brought to you by yours truly, Wild Bill of the Wild Bill fame from the Last Stand Podcast. Now, some of you new listeners out there, some of you people that are watching here may be new listeners, or you might not have even heard of the podcast. You know, I talk about goings on in the country and goings on in Stanley County in the great state of North Carolina. If you haven't listened to the podcast before, might I suggest it as one of your choices for your podcasts, for listening to podcasts. The last episode that I pushed out there was Charlie Kirk, The Cause, and School Board Smoke. And in that issue, we covered a lot of ground. We talked about Charlie Kirk's assassination, the separation of church and state, and what that means. And of course, for those of you in Stanley County, we talked about the local school board here and what they tried to do to the taxpayer as they endeavor to socially engineer the school districts and the county, I might add, by virtue of their effort to consolidate our schools. And I talked specifically about two projects that they want to do here in this county, you know, as per usual, servicing the western end of the county and leaving everyone else behind. And that's kind of what I want to get into here in this video segment. I was at the October School Board meeting, okay? I think it was October 7th. And folks, if you've listened to the podcast, or if you begin listening to the podcast in this year, you'll know that from time to time, I talk about the Trident Rebellion. These are three school board members that I have supported since the beginning of the year. Carla Poplin, Megan Allman, Bill Sorenson. These three individuals have largely exposed four other board members who I call the monarch majority because they absolutely govern and rule on that school board like a bunch of little tyrants. Robin Whitaker, Glenda Gibson, Dustin Lisk, and Vicky Watson of the, what does Vicky Watson actually do on the school board fame? You know, they've exposed their practices of lying to the public, lying to the county, lying to the people, violating state statutes and school board policies, and keeping information from the public and restricting their ability to speak out against what they've been doing behind our backs with regard to this super school consolidation effort and this latest effort to basically put the entire county on the hook for tens of millions of dollars servicing two schools on the western end of the county as they leave all the other county schools and Albemarle schools for that matter behind in their dust. So, what are we talking about here? Well, in the latest episode of How Stanley Schools Got Screwed, if you'll remember, folks, we were presented with a proposal by the school board in Stanley County for two projects, right? Two projects that the monarch majority had insisted, insisted would cost 84 million bucks. 54 million of that 84 million would be provided by the federal government in a needs-based grant, if we get that grant, we have to request the grant. The remaining 30 million bucks would have been on you, would have been on the Stanley County taxpayer. Now, if you remember in my last segment, Where There's Smoke, There's Fire, I talk about all this, right? I talk about the needs-based grant, I talk about the proposal for these two projects, and you know, what money was involved and what that would mean to you, the taxpayer. Okay? Now, this monarch majority insisted, you know, what this architect firm had presented, this majority, monarch majority insisted that it would cost 84 million bucks. And the project was going to be that they were going to tear down and rebuild Oakboro Elementary School, they were going to give them a whole new school, right? And they were going to build them an entirely new gymnasium, okay? And then, part two of this project, they were going to build an addition to West Stanley Middle School and build them an auditorium. Well, the county commissioners, I'm going to tell you, they saved our taxpaying asses. They voted for a 5% match, which put us on the hook for 2.6 million dollars. And they voted down the 30 million dollar hook, or the 36% match, they voted that down. And they saved the taxpayers from being on the hook for 30 million dollars for two projects that would benefit the west end and leave behind the rest of the county. I mean, it was just ridiculous. But you know, of course, 10 minutes after that, in the grand scheme of things, the monarch majority on the school board presents Plan B, right? Plan B still builds a brand-new elementary school for Oakboro, okay? It renovates their gym, it builds the addition to West Stanley Middle School, but leaves out the auditorium for the middle school, right? They also reduced the square footage of these projects by about 400 square feet, if I remember correctly. And I believe that the cost of per square foot also went down by like 25 bucks or something like that, right? Folks, when you're looking at what they wanted to do, right? And they're still moving forward with their plan, with a few minor adjustments, they were going to put you on the hook for 30 million dollars if they got everything they wanted. They were willing to put you through the pain of 30 million dollars, okay? And that would have had negative impacts and repercussions for years down the line. And you think our existing school system is in chaos, you have no idea what you were in store for. If you listen to the last episode, or listen to the last segment that I published, Where There's Smoke, There's Fire, you'll know what I had to say about this two-project nightmare that they were going to put the county through. You'll remember what I said. And the Stanley County Board of Education, through these four members, this monarch majority, are literally stealing or trying to steal your tax money and pour it into their objectives for a school system that doesn't benefit the majority of taxpayers and their communities and their schools. They're trying to pour it into a school system that you didn't want. Time after time, and year after year, we have seen the mismanagement of money that has contributed to the decay and maintenance needs of our schools. We've seen that they continue to redistrict our school lines in favor of choking out community schools in favor of the super school system that they want, despite what the people have demanded for years, which is to bring back our district lines that make sense for families and kids, for our existing school system layout, demanded for years to reopen Ridgecrest to begin to address the overcapacity of our schools, and to bring our schools back from the structural dead in a categorized and fiscally responsible way. And time after time, the school board members refuse to do so. They're stealing your money and using it in ways that favor one end of the county and leaves behind the rest of your county schools. And I'm telling you, I keep going back to the meeting that we had at the Waddell Center when I was presenting to the people in Albemarle and in the county what this school board had been doing behind their backs. And I'll never forget this, I wish I could remember her name, there was a woman that said essentially, every single time that the school board promises something for the schools or the school system, Albemarle schools get left behind. It's a complete mismanagement of money, folks. And honestly, I think they were going to do something else with the 30 mil, okay? Or a chunk of it, if not all of it. Remember, they want to consolidate the schools and completely destroy your community schools. Ridgecrest is a perfect example of this. Whatever happens, if they get their way, Ridgecrest will not reopen, okay? Despite the fact that this is what the people want. You know, people want their districts to make sense, they want to renovate and build up our existing community-based school system, okay? Because as I've said in presentations that I've given to people in the county, in study after study, folks, community-based schools outperform super schools in virtually every category that means anything to you and your kids, okay? And you can watch my presentation that I gave for the argument for community schools, it's a YouTube video, it's called Consolidation Presentation 2025 with Wild Bill. It's pretty compelling, folks, okay? You can also get a more in-depth perspective on the studies that support community-based schools in Episode 7, Episode 7 in 2025. It's entitled, "A Message for the People from the People," okay? That's on the Last Stand Podcast, tune into it, folks. But anyway, one of the points that I've made about what we're doing in our school systems and in our county is that before this board puts the people on the hook for tens of millions of dollars and more, you know, when you're talking about loans or bonds to cover all of this, is that before this board acts, the board needs to know what it is that the people of the county want for their school system in the first place, okay? We know that Oakboro needs some attention here. We also know that Oakboro certainly wanted a new school, and I don't blame them for that. But how did the rest of the county feel about this? You know, if we build Oakboro a brand-new school and do all the things that this monarch majority wanted to do, you know, we do this for Oakboro, but at what cost to the rest of our schools? You know, that's the question. The other day, as I said earlier, October 7th, at the end of another school board meeting, we heard a member, we heard from a member of this Trident Rebellion, as I call it, we heard from Bill Sorenson, and he conveyed exactly that sentiment, okay? We rarely hear from Mr. Sorenson on this kind of thing or this issue. And although I've disagreed with Mr. Sorenson and his characterization of the county commissioners and how they don't fund our schools enough, because honestly, I believe that the county commissioners have increased funding to the school year over year, and it's the school board that needs to change the way that it does business with the people and with the county commissioners and in the way that it spends money, okay? Despite all of that, I 100% agree with Bill Sorenson when he says that the board tried to put the people on the hook for 30 million dollars without their permission, you know? And that the school board ought to know what the people want to do with their school systems in the first place before they make these decisions. Decisions that they've made in secret meetings that violate state statute and school board policies, you know, and I agree that we've got some hard decisions to make here, okay? The county commissioners and the school board and the people of Stanley County. But from my perspective, folks, from my foxhole here, I believe that the people for years have made their case for keeping their community schools, and they've wanted to begin a restoration of our existing schools, starting with Ridgecrest. I agree with Bill Sorenson on this, and it's rare when we get to hear his thoughts on this particular issue or on issues like this when it comes to what the county taxpayer's going to be on the hook for, right? And that's why I wanted to highlight it here, folks. Here's what Bill Sorenson had to say about the schools, this plan that they had, this two-project plan that they had, and why he voted against the 30 million dollar hook to the county taxpayer. Here's what Bill Sorenson had to say.
My comments are actually driven towards the grant that we just applied for with the county commissioners. There's no guarantee we get that grant, but I'm going to assume or hope that we do. But it's important for the Stanley County voters to realize, if we get the grant or if we don't, the war is not won, okay? We have so many needs in this county facility-wise, not just in that end of the county, but there's needs in the north end, the south end, and even in Albemarle. So what I'm trying to put out there is, if we get, if we're lucky enough to get the grant, that's fantastic. The facility at Oakboro is in terrible shape, basically falling apart, I call them the nears, but it's walled, and West Stanley Middle is already grossly over capacity. We have needs elsewhere, the county is going to have to wake up and make some hard choices. Our county commissioners have been saying that to us since I've been on the board, you're going to have to make some hard choices. They have to make some hard choices too, because we don't produce revenue. We can't, we can't put one ceiling tile up without money from somewhere else. So my point is this, without significant tax revenue increase agreed to by the voters before we even put it forward, there will not be a next phase of this expansion thing, and a lot of problems in this county are going to get worse. I'm not telling the taxpayers that we need to go out there and raise taxes, I'm telling the taxpayers that I expect the county commission and the school board to get out there and start having public forums, because win or lose on this grant, the needs are growing bigger every day. So, you know, this couple of things that just crawl up my tail is, we talk about a revenue-neutral tax rate in Stanley County. I'm a taxpayer, I'm on fixed income, sort of. At the same time, you cannot keep up with the world if you keep freezing your income, your revenue stream. So what I'm proposing or saying or stating outright is, we have got to get out there and find out what the public wants to do. Do they want to let our schools decay, or do they want to look at fixing things that are broken in the North Stanley District? You know, we have several schools in this county that are over 100 years old, basically one of them, but those things have got to be addressed. And if, I'm hoping we get the grant, my gut, because I'm so jaded towards DPI, I don't think we're going to get the grant, but even if we get it, we have substantial, significant needs, and we need to get the county voters on board to address those. And that means getting out and talking to the people and seeing what they're willing to support and what they're not willing to support. So I just wanted to put that out there. We voted on that needs-based grant, I couldn't think of what it was called for 10 minutes there. We voted on it without a lot of data the first time, and I said, yeah, let's go out and get some state money. State money's still tax dollars, by the way, but somebody's going to get it, might as well be Stanley County schools. When we saw that it was going to take 30 million dollars from the local taxpayers without their permission, I had to change my vote, okay? I'm not going to go out and ask these folks on fixed incomes, barely getting by, to just bite, you know, bite the increase, but we need to find a way to find that money for something. I'm just going to let y'all know that in my opinion, Stanley County is on the verge or the cusp of a crisis for facilities and capacities. The last thing I'm going to say is going to probably hurt some feelings, is I don't think the next phase will ever happen unless we do. And I don't necessarily support the next phase or what the next phase is, but something's got to give when the majority of your facilities are 70, 80, 90, 100 years old, you just can't keep patching things up. That's my comment.
And folks, he is absolutely right. There needs to be some forums here. Now, we've, now, if y'all have been paying attention, me and a few others held a couple of forums, both in Albemarle. We tried to hold one in Norwood, Norwood was a bust, but I think by then, probably most people remember the forum at the Stanley County Ag Center and at the Waddell Community Center. I've actually updated that presentation and made it a little bit shorter, maybe I'll put that presentation up for reference, but he's absolutely right. We've got to know what people in Stanley County want to do. Now, I know that the people in Stanley County don't want their schools to decay, I mean, that's kind of rhetorical, I think. We know that Stanley County, the people of Stanley County want good schools for their kids, okay? But I also happen to believe that the people in Stanley County, in their communities, really want a couple of things. They want their school district lines to make sense, and they want to bring back our community-based school system. They don't want to get rid of their community schools. They don't want their schools left behind for these super consolidated schools, okay? There's a reason why people in Stanley County understand and know by their experience that community schools are much better for their kids, much better for their kids. And if you listen to my podcast episode that covers this and the presentation, you'll understand what the studies say about, you know, in virtually every category that's checked for community schools versus super schools, community schools outperform and are much better than your super consolidated schools. It just, it makes sense, you know? So he's absolutely right that before this board and before our politicians do anything, they need to know what to do in the first place, you know? I mean, I made that point in Episode 7, "A Message to the People from the People." You know, and this board, it's obvious, what this board's been doing, this monarch majority, is that they've been treating the citizens of Stanley County as an afterthought in their decision-making. And the only time that they think of the taxpayer of Stanley County is when they decide that they're going to lie, hide, obfuscate, and violate statutes, hold secret meetings to make these decisions without your input, you know? And Bill Sorenson's right, the people need to make it known what they want for their schools. And you know, one of the surefire ways of being able to do that, folks, is to let these politicians know what it is you want by going to these meetings, okay? You've got to go to these meetings in order to have your voices heard, you know? But I'll tell you, another surefire way that will know what the Stanley County taxpayer and, you know, parents and families want is the midterm election by voting, you know? We're headed into a midterm, folks, okay? And, you know, like I said, the surefire way of letting this school board know what you want for your community schools, if that's in fact what you want, is to vote these monarch majority tyrants out, okay? One by one, two by two, whatever's necessary, you know? I feel like we're going to see a shakeup this midterm, folks. There's been a lot of people that have been talking about this issue. We've had great turnouts for two of the three forums that we held, but I think that people will really pay attention if we take Bill Sorenson's advice and start having some public forums that involve everybody, you know? I'm telling you, this midterm election, I'm going to support my Trident Rebellion, okay? There's only like, I think there's only one seat that's up out of the three, but you know, if we can get one or two others from the county, one or two other people to unseat these other little tyrants, these other little monarchs, and take their majority away on this board, and get to the work of restoring our schools, okay? If we can find one or two people that are willing to do that, I'll back them, you know? And make no mistake, folks, the fact that this monarch majority governs like the tyrannical Democrat regimes that we see at the national level and even at the county level across this country, look, don't be fooled, all right? The Democrats are going to run somebody for this school board, I guarantee you, okay? So don't be fooled by an actual Democrat who might be running for this board, okay? They're going to run one of their own for the school board this midterm election. I can feel it, it's coming, okay? In fact, I think it's already here, and I'll cover that, I'll cover more of that later, what I know about the Democrat in Stanley County that's going to be running for the school board. But you know, I mean, looking at things, it's almost like six fingers on one hand and half a dozen on the other, this monarch majority, okay, and you know who they are, they might as well be Democrats. I mean, you know, in the grand scheme of things, you know, Dustin Lisk, he's been a Republican for like all of 15 minutes in the grand scheme of things, okay? When he was first brought in as an interim, he had been a Democrat before. He'd been a Democrat all his life until he got on, you know, just before he got onto this board, okay? But you know, this monarch majority, whether they were Democrats before or not, you know, all these so-called Republican monarchs on this board, I'm telling you, they might as well be Democrats, because that's exactly how they're, that's exactly how they're governing, okay? That's exactly how they're doing business, all right? But good on Bill Sorenson for speaking out and giving his reasons for voting that the way that he did, and for the call for government entities like the Stanley County School Board and the county commissioners to have forums and to know what the people want in the first place, and then to affect the people's determined will, okay? And that's all I got to say about that, folks. It was just good to see Bill's voice come out on this, on this board meeting, this last board meeting, and to hear what he had to say about the issue. You know, like, Bill and I don't agree on everything, but I 100% agree with what he said at this last meeting. So, let's see. Other news that have come in today, as a matter of fact, this being the, what, the 15th of October, other news, remember when I said that if you think that the whole LBGTQ plus sign equals sign, sign for pie, carrot cake, cat emoji movement, if you think that they haven't infiltrated our schools, you're fooling yourself? Remember when I said that, folks? Well, 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 it would seem that our community college here in Stanley County is a perfect example of this. The other day, the community college library had an overt display celebrating, of all things, Gay History Month. Now, if you didn't know, okay, the county commissioners, in part, provide some funding to this community college, Stanley Community College. Now, when this was brought to the attention of the county commissioners, I believe Trent Hatley was one of the ones that this was brought, this was brought to his attention, and Gerald Poplin, these two guys immediately went to work. Trent Hatley is on the county commissioners, and Gerald Poplin is one of our upstanding citizens here in Stanley County. By the close of business on Monday, okay, that would have been, what, the 13th, the display was taken down, folks, okay? Way to go, good on them, good on those two guys, okay? You know, the fact that we had a display celebrating Gay History Month, gay history? You got to be kidding me, folks. This is not what my taxpaying money, you know, what my tax money is paying, should be paying for, okay? This is ridiculous, but it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. I mean, after all, this is the community college who apparently has a teacher who's told students that go there that our founding fathers were in fact deists, and that deists don't believe that God cares about the affairs of men in their government, and that the human race is the most vile of animals on this planet, okay? That's why none of this should surprise you. But the fact, the fact that we had two people, one of our county commissioners that was willing to call Stanley Community to call Stanley Community College to task on this, and one of our citizens, Gerald Poplin, outstanding, gentlemen, outstanding. And if you think that the community college is the only place that has this sort of material, I'd be willing to bet vital parts of my anatomy, folks, that we're fooling ourselves there too, all right? You really got to wonder what's in our school libraries these days. And you really got to wonder about some of the teachers that are teaching our high school kids, and some of our high school kids that attend courses at Stanley Community College, you got to really wonder what these teachers are teaching them, you know? If they're willing to put something up like this in the library there at the community college, what else are they teaching, you know? But, but anyway, good on those two guys. And there you have it, folks, that's the news, that is all the news for this video segment. You know, folks, the leftists are still out there, okay? They're propagating garbage, you know, they're trying to indoctrinate our kids, and it's here, it's in Stanley County, okay? Keep your eyes open, because it's out there. I'm telling you what, folks, you know, when I think about this, the Stanley County commissioners have acted where it's been necessary to act, representing the principles of good governance on more than one occasion. And that doesn't mean that I agree with everything that they do, folks, okay? Or that they don't need to do more, or they don't need to do anything differently at times. But the fact that they've saved our bacon with this $30 million, and the fact that they stopped this insanity with this LBGTQ Gay History Month thing at our community college, you know, the fact that they've stopped the insanity wherever and whenever it's been brought to their attention, it gives me a lot of respect and confidence in our county commissioners, okay? I have a lot of respect for those guys, you know? I don't agree with everything, and I wish they would do more with some of the things that we're facing as a county. But I really have to say that I respect our county commissioners and what they've done, and what they've been doing, the same way I respect our Trident Rebellion on our Stanley County School Board. Megan Allman, Carla Poplin, and Bill Sorenson, you know, they gave me confidence, and I have a whole deal, a lot of respect for them, because they're doing what it is they're supposed to do, and that's stand up for the principles and virtues of the people that they represent, okay? But like I said, anyway, good on all of those people for standing up to this nonsense. Now, if you haven't yet listened to my radio-broadcast styled podcast, folks, The Last Stand with Wild Bill, of the Wild Bill fame, I encourage you to go to Spotify, okay? Or wherever you get your podcasts, okay? You can find me. You'll see the image, you know, the skeleton gunslinger, and I encourage you to listen in to, you know, you can catch up with the 2025 episodes, okay? I talk about anything and everything that people are talking about, the things that are important to me, because they're important to you, you know? Especially right here, down on the ground in the good old USA, in Stanley County. Next episode for the podcast will be in November, unless I can push out another episode before then, but the next scheduled episode is in November, folks, okay? So you got enough time between now and then to get caught up with 2025 episodes. Episode 1, titled "America is Back," you know, start catching up, folks, because we talk about everything and anything that means anything to you, and that's why it means so much to me. So if you're new to the program, if you've never listened to the podcast, I encourage you to go do so. All I can say is buckle up and hold on to your butts, folks.